Good evening. Welcome to the Plan Board Meeting for the Town of East Fishkill, July 17th, 2025. Will everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The upcoming meeting dates are August 19th, 2025, and September 18th, 2025. We have minutes from the meeting of June 12th for approval. Could I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
I need a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll abstain as I wasn't at the meeting.
Oh, an abstention by Lori Jeez, and she was not at the meeting. First item on the agenda is a public hearing for Valley Christian Church. Could I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Welcome.
Hello, I'm Alex Lamo. I work for Wellin Architecture, and we're, our client is Valley Christian Church. We're happy to be here tonight at the public hearing. We've been in front of the board before presenting a parking lot expansion for their property on Route 82. So should we just do an overview of the project, or do you have questions?
Perhaps if you could summarize any changes or things that you've done since the last meeting. I think there were a few items that you were going to try to address.
Sure. So, yeah, we revised the parking lot. Let's, I'll point to the screen. So there was a few comments we've picked up. We've adjusted a number of spaces in the new lot, so there's a total of 23 spaces in the new parking lot. We've, we had to stripe one of these up here, so someone can turn around if, say, the parking lot's full. But, and we have to reduce the existing parking by four spots with, so it's a net add of 19 in the end. Other things we were modifying, where we added a crosswalk that was suggested. So we're going to stripe that out, and, you know, we lose a spot for that. We have the no parking signs that was suggested by the fire department. So there's kind of like a half spot there, so we'd have to put up a sign there. Otherwise, the lighting has been adjusted, and it's currently, there's no foot candles at the perimeter of the property. We have a wood stockade fence at the perimeter of the property and a wood guard rail, because it's a pretty steep slope at the edge of the parking lot. Let's see. And we also updated stair, stair drawings to have footings, as was requested. Matt, you want to go over your updates?
Sure. So that, I mean, that was most of it. The lighting poles were, the height was reduced from 15 feet down to 10 feet. As Alex said, there's no foot candle trespass onto the neighbor's property. The landscaping has remained pretty much the same that was shown last time. They're 18 feet on center, which, which is adequate for the species proposed. Let's see, what else? So we did some testing on site for the drywells for the storm water management, and we found some bedrock, pretty shallow, in the location where we wanted to put them. So we need to rethink that a little bit. But it seems that the bedrock is at a slope, so we think if we push the drywells back further into the parking lot a little bit, which would be to the west, we think we'd have better luck there. We didn't excavate that while we were out there, because we didn't want to tear up the existing parking lot, but that's definitely something that we can do. We were hoping to do that as a condition of approval, but it would be just to explore and find an adequate spot for the, for the drywall. So that was pretty much that one. And I think that's, that's, that's pretty much it for plan updates.
Okay, thank you. I'll start with questions or comments by board members.
So I have one question with regards to the parking spots that face the church. Are there any parking stop blocks installed or planned to be installed in the spaces? I know you have the, the barrier or the...
Wooden guardrail.
Wooden guardrail. I don't know, you know, that's a pretty steep slope thereafter. Like, I would think that you might want to add some additional guard. God forbid if a car did come and, you know, make entry or against that barrier. I think it would be an additional precaution.
Like a wheel stop?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just only saying it because I don't know how, you know, that wood barrier is going to hold up against a car if somebody were to, you know, come up against it. So I, I don't think they're that cost, costly, and I think it would be like an additional safety measure. It might be a consideration, just at least for that side. Because I, I don't know, do you know where the grade change is? Where those steps come down, like from where the, the parking cop is to the ground?
Yeah, it's, it's significant. I think it's 296 down to 280. So, yeah, like 14 feet.
I just feel it's a small price to pay for additional safety.
Yeah, I think that's a good comment. Just to let you know, so there's a detail for the wood guide rail. They are eight by eight posts buried five and a half feet in the ground, so they're substantial.
Okay.
Yeah, I think guardrails are the, the parking blocks.
Stops, yeah.
Okay. Other questions or comments by board members? Questions or comments from our professionals?
The only thing I would add to the drainage is that we're okay with deferring or, you know, pushing it off until you mobilize or as a condition, but it would be at your own risk. As much parking lot as you need to dig up to, to find a spot, that's on you, so.
Sure. And I need to talk with Rania about that, because I'm not exactly sure what standards he wants it designed to. He indicates calculations here, but I don't, I didn't see anything in the code governing.
Well, it'd be the area, basically, you know, the new parking area that you're creating.
Yeah, but usually you would design to like a one-year storm or a 10-year storm.
Twenty-five.
What's that?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five year storm. Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
I have comments.
Go ahead, Michelle.
So I just want to remind the planning board that the last time we talked about, they, I talked about the lighting poles, because I was concerned about them being visible from the neighbor's property. They did reduce the height of the lighting poles by about five feet. They're still 10 feet tall, so they're likely to be visible. They did a nice job with dropping the lighting levels off at the edges of the property, but there are hotspots right under the lights, because there are, I think they, four or five poles, so they tried to do as few poles as possible, partly because they take up a parking space and also... But once you do that, once you have fewer poles, then you have hotter spots directly underneath those poles. So I just want to make you guys aware of what it's visually going to look like. And then also, they have a proposed fence, but the fence is, it's just a timber fence, you know, like a stockade, stockade fence, so.
It's not privacy.
Right, exactly.
Split rail, right?
Split rail?
No.
Stockade.
It's, it's the stockade with the points, you know, like the...
Oh, it is, okay.
So that will have to probably be maintained over the years, you know, just because those tend to, you know, deteriorate after time. And then the landscaping, you know, because of the slope and because it's a kind of rock up there, we're not really sure how well the landscaping will take. So I did add a condition that, that we would make sure that the landscaping was sufficient and that the visual buffering of the new parking area was, was sufficient to the town engineer and the town planner once it's in, because I think it probably, it's a little bit of trial and error up there, because I think it's kind of a tough spot. So we'll take a look at it and make sure that, that it's, you know, doing what it's supposed to do for that neighbor. Okay? And then there are a few things that are going to carry over from the previous site plan that weren't done. Like, there isn't an enclosure around the garbage area, the refuse container. So I think in part that's because there's a shed on the site right now where the enclosure would have been. And I don't know if you're planning to keep that shed or not keep that shed, but if you're planning to keep that shed, that shed needs to be relocated and put on the site plan somewhere. And then we need the enclosure installed. There's some missing, or there's some movement of handicap spaces that we sort of talked about the last time. I think right now you've got two over at that accessory building that you have, and I don't know if that's, I mean, I'm not sure exactly how you guys function or how many folks need those handicap spaces, but I think there's six in front of the church, and I think there's eight that needs to be there overall, and two of them are over at that accessory building, which is pretty far from the actual church. So I don't know, you know, how we want to split it up, if that's appropriate or not, but you might want to look at that, depending on how they're used.
Yeah, it's in the spot shown on the last site.
It is, it is. Well, that's what I'm asking you, is that, is that a, are you, do you have enough, you know, handicap spaces for the, the, because they're kind of far away. So that's just saying if you're going to need to adjust that, adjust that on this plan.
Okay.
Okay? And then, let's see. I think...
Is it not done here?
Yeah, I know, I know, that's not, so, but I don't know if there is any, because they're not showing it on the plan.
You need a quantity of export.
Yeah, because I have a...
It's on the plan. Earthwork notes.
Okay, what is that?
Yeah, what is the quantity?
Thirty-eight hundred cubic yards, which is similar to last.
Right, so you will need an excavation and fill special permit.
But isn't the approval granted?
It can be either way, it can be granted either way.
You get the permit downstairs, but I got to get the approval here.
Yeah, so you should probably advertise for that 3,800 square, so they probably have to come back, because they're supposed to advertise for the special permit.
Got it.
And then, yeah, once, once, once we have the quantity, you have to put it in the advertisement.
You said it's a public hearing?
It is. Yeah, because it's a special permit. So I think those are all my comments right now.
Okay, any other comments by our professionals? If not, we'll start with the public, and I do have a letter to, to read into the record. From Tim Tarpe, says, "Good evening, my name is Tim Tarpe. I reside in a property that directly borders the Valley Christian Church at Route 82 in Hopewell Junction. Unfortunately, I was unable to be here tonight. On March 10th, 2025, I returned home from work to discover that the church had hired a tree company to clear the ridge that serves as a natural buffer between their property and our residential one. Clearing has impacted our privacy, especially during the months when the trees are bare, making the church building now clearly visible from our home. While I fully support the church's growth and continued success, I'm disappointed in the way the project was carried out. This is not the first time we encountered an issue regarding the ridge. In the summer of 2023, I came home to find someone cutting trees and brush along the property line. When I inquired, I was informed that they were exploring the idea of expanding the parking lot onto the ridge. I expressed my concern at that time, noting that the ridge provides a crucial privacy buffer and that any such work would require review and approval by the town due to its proximity to a residential property. When I reviewed the church's original site plan approval in 2024, they clearly designated the ridge as a wooded green space. That plan was implemented, and it alleviated my initial concerns. However, without any notice or approvals, the church proceeded to clear the ridge on March 10th of this year. A significant number of mature trees and natural buffer were removed without any opportunity for neighbors to weigh in. Had the proper procedure been followed, my family and I, as directly affected neighbors, could have participated in the public process to voice our concerns. We could have worked together with the church to find a mutually acceptable solution. At this point, I respectfully request that the ridge be replanted with mature vegetative buffer to restore the privacy we previously enjoyed. Additionally, if a parking lot expansion of this scale is under consideration, I ask that the town ensure the following: that the proper privacy buffer is restored and maintained, that no overhead lighting negatively impacts our property, that the design prevents car headlights from shining toward our home, and that the vehicles are screened from view. Thank you for your time and consideration." Are there any other members of the public that are here to speak for or against the project? There being none, I think we will have to adjourn the public hearing unfortunately, because we need to extend this public hearing to take care of the excavation fill special permit that was just discussed.
It's not a separate...
Pardon me?
It's not a separate public hearing, it has to be part of the...
It's a continuation of, of this, am I correct?
It's more than one action under SECR.
Yeah, the planning board issues a special permit, so it'll be done under, by them.
So we have to do the mailings and everything over again? We were to bear that special permit last time.
And do we have any problem with the timing of the mailings?
Twenty days.
Okay, good. So we're good. So I'll accept a motion to adjourn the public hearing until August 19th, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, and I think if you could be prepared to, to respond specifically to the concerns by, by Mr. Tarpe, and if you need a copy of this letter, we can get one to you.
Alex, I think the thing that I would be most concerned about is the lighting, because you're going to be able to see those poles over, so I don't know if there's any other ideas that you could come up with that might help protect the neighbor from seeing those lighting poles above the fence line, because they're going to be able to see them. So I don't know if you can, yeah, and the headlights, well, the headlights might be blocked from the fence.
Designing with every, you know, fences, lighting, I mean...
I, that was mentioned in the previous meeting, so.
So is that something you could look at, Matt?
I, I get it, but you're going to still see those poles. There's pretty, there's like 11-foot candles under some of those, those lights, so. You're going to see them, you're going to, you know, he's...
You'll see the top, and you'll see the area where there's...
You'll, you'll... Yeah, but they're going to be above the fence. The poles are going to go above the fence, they're 10 feet tall, and the plantings aren't going to be mature enough.
Right.
So.
And there was also a comment made in that letter about the headlights. Like, I don't know, based on the type of fence they're going to put there, I don't know. Again, I'd have to see like how the grade changes from where the cars park facing the, you know, the homes in the back. If the headlights are going to be protected with the type of fence they've chosen, because you're saying stockade, so there's spaces between it. So that still could not prevent light from shining through it, so.
Well, the design of the fences, they're right, squished, right?
It is, together, okay.
Okay, so it's solid, straight across.
Yeah, and it's six feet tall, which I think is the code.
Okay, so it's not the one that has the spaces in between?
I mean, it's supposed to be just a wall.
Okay. Fair enough.
Okay. Thank you. So the next item on the agenda is Shady Creek Road subdivision. Good evening, Mr. Day.
Good evening. How's everybody?
Wonderful.
Thank you. I hit that.
So, Michelle, are we prepared to declare lead agency this evening on this project?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'll speak to something that came in in between.
So I'll wait. Great.
So as you may know, it's a three-lot proposed subdivision. It's the old Hillside Lake Fire proposal. And it fronts on Hillside Lake Road. So just imagine two lots in the front and a flag lot in the rear. There is a, an area wetland in the back. We have, have notified, actually reached out to D.C. for a J.D. on it. We haven't seen anything as of yet. We now are showing a 50-foot buffer around it, which doesn't have any impact. Even if it was to be a 100-foot buffer, we still have room and we're still going to make it work. But one of the issues that came up was the separations between the town roads and the proposed driveways. Right now, we're showing about 75 feet, which I believe, oh, wow, thank you. Okay. It's open out here.
There it is.
Yeah. Now we're going to rescind the application, I'm sorry. Is everyone a crowd around the laptop?
Yeah, I'm not sure why that's happening.
Is it behind the screen that's showing all the...
No, it'll pop up. I can't get it to...
It's like it's frozen.
Yeah, it looks, it looks like it froze on the TV screen.
On the TV.
I don't think your cursor...
Oh, why, the mouse isn't moving?
Yeah, nothing's moving.
Yeah, the mouse, the pointer.
Yeah, got it.
Unplug it, plug it back.
Yeah. Control alt leave, control alt.
It's stopping.
Like, Captain or something. Swap the screen. It looks like there's two tabs open now. Okay. Okay. Sort of reboot, move it all again.
Ta-da, well done.
So as I was saying...
Can you blow, can you blow that up a little bit for us, too?
Sorry?
Can you, can you magnify that a little bit?
I'm going to try. That's right.
That's a little better.
So what we're, what I was saying before was, there's... Thank you. So what we're proposing is, I guess he doesn't like television. We're proposing these driveways that are more than 75 feet away from Jennifer and the, the other road, which is Casey. And we're also proposing a flag lot to the rear. There is a wetland in the back, and as we mentioned, we did send for a J.D. on that from the D.C. We've not received it yet, but as you can see, right now, we're showing a 50-foot buffer. Even if it was another 50 feet, we would not be anywhere near any of the improvements. We're basically going to submit to the board now and move the ball along if the board doesn't see any other reason why we couldn't move forward.
Okay, questions or comments from board members?
Mark, the flag lot in the rear, is that how, is the house tilted? Or it doesn't look like it's perpendicular to the road?
It is tilted.
Does it have to be?
I, probably with the discretion of the owner. I mean, we, we meet the stuff, but, I mean, it's back pretty far. I doubt it's going to be an issue if you're dragging down the road. I don't know your concern. Your concern is the house needs to face the road? I think we're trying to give it more privacy from the rear yards of the other, the other lot.
So it's... Michelle, is that part of code? Don't we need houses to face road?
So we talked about this at the last meeting, that we, like, that the planning board, especially with flag lots now, we're asking you to determine the front yard, number one. In this case, it's pretty clearly Hillside Lake Road, right? That's Hillside Lake, but, but we like to see them straight, because it ends up causing problems for setbacks with anything that folks want to do in the future, like pools and sheds and all that kind of thing. So if there's no compelling reason to turn it, then we'd like to see it turned straight. But if you, if there's a reason that you're doing it that way and you haven't, and you want it that way for a specific reason...
Well, if you look at it, the front of the house doesn't face directly into the back of the other house. That's partly why we do it, but, you know, if there's a code requirement, which I'm not aware of, we, we rotate it, it doesn't really make an issue.
I mean, it's, I think we're, we're seeing, Mark, a lot of problems in the future when the houses are, are turned, when we end up having to deal with accessory structures and stuff.
We'll rotate it.
Okay, great. Other questions or comments? Questions or comments from our professionals, Michelle?
Yes, so Mark's, I know he's meeting on the J.D., but we also got a habitat assessment back, I think at the end of June, and there is blanding turtles habitat in that pond. It's a core habitat for, for blandings, and they said they likely, the habitat assessment says they likely use the property for mating, basically. And so the, this is all under D.C.'s jurisdiction. They'll let us know what they want or need, if anything, with regards to the blending turtle, but I would just ask that all of the, the recommendations and mitigation requirements that are in the habitat assessment be placed on the site plan, and we'll probably include it in the resolution of approval, but there are specific things that you can do to help mitigate any potential impacts to the landing turtle, and we'll have to include all of those in any of the work and any of the disturbance. I don't know if they'll take a buffer. Sometimes the D.C. will come back and add additional buffers for the turtles, sometimes they don't. Sometimes it's just a matter of making sure during construction that they have the right fencing in place, but we'll obviously wait to see what D.C. says about that, and I'm sure when they come out, they'll give some instruction on that.
Okay. And I'm sorry, Mark, are there any shared driveways or no shared driveways?
No, they're not shared. They're actually separate.
Okay.
I know it's hard to see, but they are separate.
Okay.
So that plays into the, the issue we noticed. I mean, the, the town code asks for 125 feet between driveways and roads, where the county road standard is 75 feet.
And this is a county road?
It's a county road that it's on, so it seems like that's a reasonable thing. We just pointed out the town code in there, so. And it seems like the site distancing arrangement is good. In fact, the existing lot, or the existing driveway is being further, moving further from the road.
Okay, any other questions or comments? If not so, are we prepared to declare lead agency?
Yep, you can declare lead agency, and then I would, you know, you can also consider setting for a public hearing.
Right. Okay, well, let's start with, I'll accept a motion to declare lead agency?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so, Mark, will you be ready for a public hearing on the August meeting?
We will.
August 19th?
I think we can make it work, sure.
Okay. I'll accept a motion to schedule a public hearing for the applicant for the August 19th, 2025 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you very much.
We'll see you then, thank you. Okay, the SWF2 Fulfillment Center, if the applicant asks to be withdrawn from this agenda, I'm sure they'll be back at some time in the future, that takes us to Summit Woods.
The whole act was withdrawn, or just for this meeting?
Withdraw the discussion. Yeah, yeah, to clarify, if they, asked to be withdrawn from discussion, but the application is still live. Yeah, yeah, to clarify, if they, asked to be withdrawn from discussion, but the application is still alive.
Is there a overall?
Yep.
Yeah, let me, let me just, I'll call you up to do that. Mister Chairman, I'm not part of your, uh, my name is Mark Millen with Charbel. Uh, I represent Charbel, we're working on the Montage at East Fishkill. We're joined tonight by the principal, um, an owner of A M D Fishfield, Summit Woods, and we were gonna do a broad brush overview, but I think, uh, you, I'd hear Mister Garrett say that's okay. We were gonna kinda give you the whole picture in one, uh, working together on sewer, on, on easement, a lot of things. Would that be helpful?
Yes.
Okay, Mister Garrett? Okay. Uh, Mark Millen, uh, Senior Vice President of Development for Charbel Duchess Incorporated. Good evening, everyone, um, I know you missed me, uh, it's been, I think, we were here, I checked my notes earlier. The first, uh, scoping document for our project was adopted July nineteenth, twenty, nope, July nineteenth, two thousand and five. So twenty years ago, completely different project, senior housing, a bunch of things. We went down the path with the board and the town eventually said, we don't want a, a senior housing combo development, we want you to just stick with the zoning and go with the conventional as of right approach. And then we opted for a cluster subdivision, so we've been working on the project for twenty years. That happens often, believe it or not, in our industry, it's something we deal with. The last time we were here, uh, was probably September two, twenty twenty, no, twenty twenty is it? We had a public hearing, um, and that was after we had finding statements adopted, both for, for the Montage at East Fishkill in November twenty nineteen, and I think Summit Woods followed a few months after us. So we had findings, statements that permitted a one hundred and twenty-two lot subdivision for Montage and a hundred and seventy-five lot subdivision for, um, Summit Woods. Both plans were, were, went through the secret process, as you all know, um, they're both utilizing a cluster subdivision, um, layout. So the last hearing was, hey, we're here, we're now working with the town on a public sewer option, and at that time, the town had asked that we run sewer up to the four corners and connect our projects through pump stations and all of those things. It wasn't too long after that meeting that the town had reconsidered where they think the best option would be, for, uh, sewer for both projects. And it was determined, I think, early twenty twenty-three, that the best option would be to reconsider running sewer to, what do we call that, the local family? Uh, right, right down the road. So we hired engineers and did a, a big study on capacity and how we could do all that, and worked through those details in twenty twenty-three. Both projects together, we worked on how we could do that, how we could finance it, how we could phase it, all of these things. Um, and that's been moving along, I'll give you a quick update on that in a second. We also encountered wetland validation issues. The maps were beyond ten years old, or whatever the, the date was on the map, so we had to go back, get our consultants out in field, rewalk, revisit the wetlands, um, and remap those wetlands and get the D C to validate the current and the, the most, you know, current, uh, conditions out there. As luck would have it, both subdivisions, um, were required to show additional land that had changed in, uh, I guess you could say, soil conditions over time. In ours, and I won't speak for Summit Woods, cause I don't know all the details that the engineers do, um, we had a swell that was connected to an Army Corps wetland off in the rear of the property. The D C decided it's connected hydraulic, hydraulically to a larger wetland, we wanna take this as a wetland. So we could have fought and said no, and had a whole year go by, and another twenty years later, you know, um, but we didn't do that. I think what we said was, I think we can live with that and we can shuffle the deck and move some lots now. Same thing, I think, occurred similarly with, with Summit Woods, along the same area. The buffer on one project pushes over to the other and the wetland kinda, so we both went back to the engineers and said, can you, can you help us get around this? And sure enough, we were able to do that. What we didn't do, and, and, uh, Ms. Robbins asked recently, and I think it's a good exercise, is now that you're here and you're coming back before the planning board, you got your lot counts based on a conventional lot layout. Well, that conventional lot layout show the old wetlands, you need to show the new wetlands. So we had a call last Thursday with town staff, um, supervisor was involved, and we wanted to give everybody an update where we are. What came out of that meeting was, go back to the old conventional lot layout as an exercise and make sure you can get the lot count, lot yield that you got before, um, so you can prove that out to the staff, and then they can report back to you. So far, um, just so you know, on our end, we had found our, our CAD program, the D B S A, and pattern layout, and, uh, superimposed the new wetland, and it looks like on the as of right plan, it had a hundred and twenty-six lots, or a hundred and twenty, whatever it was, we look like we lose anywhere from four to five lots. So as long as the as of right number, less the, the, you know, lots that we lost is still one twenty-two, then we would come back and say, we still have the right, we believe, and we'll make sure the town agrees. If we lose more than that, then we lose a lot, then we're at one twenty-one, and we just take the pen to one of the lots that is closest to the wetland likely and remove one of those lots. It'll be a little more open space. Um, we're in the process of doing that, and I think we'll have that done. If ours is done, but I think we're waiting to make sure, what was it, something? Both plans. Yeah, no, we're, we're in the same position, we'll. Okay, so we're, we're about to do that, we're submitting that to town, town engineer and town planner. The plan would be to get that, um, agreed upon, and then back on track. So, um, for all of the outside agency approvals, we're still in the process with the D C. They validated the new wetlands on both projects. We have three crossings and now another area that we have a road that goes through. That information's been before them, we're about to resubmit all the details they asked for, um, additional details with bridge crossings and things that we've been doing all along. Each time we make a submission to the D C, we post that on our website, so, and then I copy usually in submission, copy the town, make sure they know we're, that was something we agreed on with, uh, you, Mister Chairman, all along. So there's an open process, so, uh, that's also the Army Corps. We're about to get the Army Corps permit, which, uh, not only acknowledges the wetlands on site, but it also permits the offsite, um, force main that will go to the sewer, uh, plant over here in Hopewell Hamlet, so. That's where we are on the big picture, in addition to that, I'm sorry, there's a, the D O T permit for the intersection of two sixteen and Route fifty-two on our new road. You may recall that we had initially proposed a signalized intersection to fix that poorly aligned intersection to a T. The D O T opted for what's very similar, a modern roundabout, and they pushed us in that direction. That caused the need for us to get additional land from an adjacent property owner, which we did acquire. I can, I think I provided that to the town, and we provided that to the D O T, so we have all control of the land needed to build that improvement. So that was also done in the last two years, since we saw you last. So our plan now is to proceed with an application we submitted back in October and November of twenty twenty-two. We were trying at that time to get on a planning board agenda. At that time, the town had asked us to get a better handle on how the sewer was gonna be handled and draft a memorandum of understanding, or whatever we call it, a memorandum of agreement, with the town board that acknowledges the partnership with private development community, Montage and Summit Woods, and the town on moving this project forward and sending the sewer to, uh, the Hopewell Hamlet Sewer Plant. The thought would be, there would be a regional plant, um, which is currently shown on the Montage property. So both projects would drain sewer, or, you know, pump sewer to that pump station, and then pump through a force main, uh, out to fifty-two, up to, I think, the firehouse property. Is that the right?
That vicinity.
So, in that area.
Training center.
Okay, and then there would be a second pump station, which was, uh, the, the other phase, and that would pump from the vicinity of that pump station up to, up fifty-two, up three seventy-six, and into the, um, Hopewell Hamlet Treatment Center. That's the current plan. We have an M O U that's been through a few reviews with the town, I think we're really close, that'll probably take another week or two to tie up, and then I think it goes before the board for comment, and we'll, we'll continue to work on that. The water system for both projects, town had asked a while back to consider pumping water or, or getting water from a county, uh, system that didn't prove feasible, so what was determined and agreed upon was, we would continue to develop the, the wells on the Montage property, we're in the process of running the seventy-two hour pump tests, all of which are positive, the, the initial results are good, they're very high yielding, uh, wells, and we also drilled the third well, that's a new requirement, um, from when we started this whole process, and that's pumping water somewhere in the two hundred and forty gallons per minute, way over what we had assumed. So, um, both projects would be served by a private, initially private water system, which eventually would, um, through this agreement, would be turned over to the town. I think we're still working on how that happens, uh, and the logistics there, but that, again, so, public sewer, public water, and, um, the roads would be pumping. We would have a district, is that what we?
Well, there's no district for the roads, but.
But I think, I think the spine of the road was. Yeah, because it was a master plan road, I'm sorry, I do remember, and I think the way I had recall, I'll go back in our notes and what the finding statement says about that. But I believe at least the main road that connects through Montage from Route two sixteen and fifty-two, all the way through the project, I thought that was both projects. Yeah, and it comes out. Okay, and it goes through the Summit Woods project all the way out to the other section of fifty-two, where two sixteen comes back on the other, old fifty-two.
It looks like.
Yeah. So the, there's the project we have, you know, um, lighting sidewalks, um, in certain areas, all those details are shown on our plans.
Yeah, this, this, this actually starts, goes through, and comes back out.
Okay. Okay, so.
And the other roads are homeowners association?
I don't think so, I think they're all.
They're all intended to be.
We, we went through that with, and that's why the bridges are, bridges are rated, there's a sunshine fund set up for the bridge, a reserve fund, um, I'm gonna go back and confirm what I'm saying, I believe that's where we ended up. Because we talked about a lighting district and some other things, a sidewalk district, all of these things, and, um, that's the way we set up the plans. One of the other comments, and where we are now is we're addressing, uh, Ms. Robbins' memo of May thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. The wetlands that we just talked about, they were shown on the subdivision plan, I wanna make sure that everybody knows they've been there, but we need to show them now on an as of right plan. We're working through that, we're gonna do some calculations with the E S L. Quick question for Ms. Robbins, the, the C R D zoning is no longer?
So I think that there was confusion, because I think the original project that was the senior housing was, they were asking for the property to be zoned, C R D, exactly, so. And then when you went conventional, it went just strict cluster, yeah, so I think that was just a carryover on the cover page. Yeah, I think so, I think that's what that was.
So, the, the first page of the memo we're working on, I believe we're gonna have something to you early next week.
Great.
That's really all of that, and then there were a few comments about tables and acreages, we're working on those details. One of the big questions all along for our project was, how do you do a big development like this with no way out? It's considered a cul-de-sac, right? So we worked with, uh, our neighbor, Summit Woods, together on a few things, and there was a developers agreement in place that allows not only connection of some of the infrastructure, like sewer and water, but also, uh, an emergency, if you will, if we were to build one project before the other, either project could go and build an emergency connection or roadway that we did talk about in the secret process, so that there's another outlet, um, should there ever be a fire and one of the roads are closed. Went through that in great detail, um, what we need to do now is show how we do that. You know, what's the easement, how does that show up on a plan? We're working on showing that on a, uh, a legal description and a plan of easement, and that's gotta go both ways, cause each project has a long road into a, a section in the back that needs another way out. Working on that, and that was one of the comments here. Little things like landscaping, I think we always wanna make sure we're doing the right thing there, we're working on that, um, notes about, that big one was that the site. Okay, so no, uh, irrigation on the individual lots, we talked through that, the planning board, um, we're okay with that. I don't know if you saw someone, you know, putting a sprinkler into their hose, but maybe you can. Usually what we do is we put it in the D, we put it, you know, the, the homeowner language, but, you know, you still got the guy that goes out there with a hose, but. If we needed to, I think Mister Bryant said you could, you may be installing irrigation well, that's not something we're planning currently, um, so we're, we're gonna go the route, at least with our subdivision, I don't know. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't wanna speak for, um, Summit Woods. And then, yeah, all along, we were notified that there was an active mining operation, lasting occurring, we, we, we're, we're well aware of that, that would have to be deed notice and all of those things. Are still things that we're aware of, so that's the combination of where we were, what we've been doing, why it's taking so long. But I appreciate your patience and willing to, willingness to hear us before we come back. What we'd like to do, and, and we talked about this last Thursday, was submit the plan that shows the new as of right subdivisions and prove that we have the right number of lots. If, if we have to lose a lot, then we, we, you know, take out the eraser and we do what we have. If we can keep what we have, then we keep what we have, and we try to get on the next available agenda to reopen the public hearing, to get the remaining comments that we need to hear from the public so we can close the public portion, and then at that point, get to a point where the board can grant a decision based on, uh, conditions of approval, like outside agency approvals, finalizing, uh, the certain documents that we need from the D O T, things that you typically are associated with an approval, right, with a planning board approval. So, um, I'm not gonna push the date until we have comfort level. I'd love to be here, and I'm sure you'd love to see me next month, um, but I don't know if, that's, that's, that's our, our hope, is that we can get there, but we'll see, so.
I guess, I had, I had a question, so, these are two separate projects that we're, we're viewing, right? But it seems as if there's contingencies that are connected between them, so if there's, if there needs to be surety in the fact, like you mentioned, something like the, the emergency access road, stuff like that, would there be bonds posted to make sure that those roads would be completed? Let's say, and again, I'm not trying to, if the financial competency of either party here on either of these projects failed, how do we know that if, let's say, one existed and, and built, and then these, uh, roads weren't completed, you know, are they gonna be forced to post a bond to make sure that that, uh, egress is made for emergency, fire, things of that nature?
We try to answer that. So a performance bond is posted for all the public works or or all the features that are gonna be dedicated to the town. Uh the water, the sewer, the roads, the sidewalks, the landscape, all that. And typically, it's just for whatever is part of their project. So I think in this case, each project would have to have another line item that in the event they had to build that other section. And if they don't have to build it, then no harm, no foul. And if they do, it's in that bond already.
Okay.
I think they both have to carry each other's burden, so to speak, in their bond.
Right. But as far as the town, let's like say that the one side of the project's completed and the roads are dedicated back to the town, I'm just saying that they would be protected in the fact that.
Well, it's a line item under performance bond.
Okay, very well.
Additional improvement.
Okay.
And then the legal side to allow that to occur prior to one project starting to work.
Right, and you're having agreement together that this easement would exist so that that could happen either way.
Yep.
And just a question, Michelle, with the wetlands changing, it sounds like they've changed character or shape at least. Is there anything, we had endangered species, I thought, that had mitigation measures on the plan. So do those mitigation measures also have to change?
So they're still, yeah, they're still in the process of working with DEC on all their permitting.
So DEC controls.
Making the assumption, I haven't seen all this the um stuff back from DEC yet, but I'm making the assumption that they are handling, cuz they usually are making comments on the endangered species, the wetlands, and then the mitigation area, cuz they do have mitigation area also proposed at the front of the site um for some of the mitigation with regards to the wetlands. Um and then ultimately, it'll it'll depend on where the lots are and where the houses fall because, you know, if if all the houses remain outside of the wetland and there's no disturbance in those areas and they'll have less mitigation. I think most of the mitigation right now has to do with the roadways and the culverts cuz they're crossing the, they're crossing basically creeks or streams, whatever, in three different locations. And that is where the most mitigation and most of the um concern about the habitat is. Um but I just wanna remind for the folks that haven't been here very long, um secret was completed. We had findings on this, but right now the these projects are in front of you and some of you are new for subdivision approval, okay? So you're gonna be looking to approve the subdivision plat, the layout of the lots and the um make sure that the lots all meet zoning and that kinda thing. Um and that's that's essentially what they're gonna come in with. And so right now, because the wetlands, there's a couple of things that have have been updated over time. We have to go back and kind of review some of the stuff that we had looked at for years. And because some of the boundaries have changed, they'll be modifying a few things, tweaking a few things here and there. Then we'll do a, you know, a full review of all the the lots and the subdivision plat. And then you guys will um weigh in on it at that time.
If if I could add to that too, DE, DEC typically won't issue wetland permits or other permits. They'll wanna issue all their permits altogether. And they'll only do that if all their species stuff, if everything their department is concerned with is satisfied.
But with two separate projects, it would be, the potential would exist that they would be satisfied on one project, but not the other. So that's where this discussion, I think, about making sure that the road can be built and things like that is gonna be really critical.
Correct.
If the road itself is what is giving us that, you know, secondary access, so it's not a cul-de-sac and the road is the subject of where the DEC is trying to mitigate. I just, we need to understand what that looks like.
Correct, the permits would have to be, if one side is using one of the other roads, then the permits would have to be in place on both properties because they're going to be accessing the emergency access through the other property, you're right, correct. And they just have to, it all can be done, they just have to figure out the timing and the legal pieces of it, which I'm sure they're working on with their attorneys. But that all has to be in place before we can approve the subdivision plats.
Okay.
Yeah, we talked about, we wouldn't be able to file a plat unless the conditions were met, which would be, just for an example, if Montage fought, wanted to file a plat, but Summit Woods or vice versa, had that emergency road and we had all the permits on Montage, but the emergency road crossed through another wetland offsite, that permit has to be in hand in order for us to file a plat. So we talked about that Thursday, we're well aware of that. Um the last uh notice of incomplete application we got from the DEC was March, I'm sorry, yeah, March nineteenth, twenty twenty five. And we've been working on getting all the ducks in a row and we're about to resubmit to that letter. The town has that letter. And then I'll I'll submit everything I submit to the town, I'm sorry, to DEC, to the town. So you have a good record of what we're doing, you can follow the process. Same thing goes for um Summit Woods.
Okay.
I guess another question for the professionals was, he mentioned that there was a requirement for them to drill an additional well. So that's a third well on that property. Can I just ask, what was the reasoning and?
Well, the the town board adopted a new regulation because uh we're finding, and this is a good example with these more remote projects, that even though the DEC says you just need to have one well for redundancy, when you lose that well and you have all these wetlands and things, it can be very difficult to drill a new well. Say say the second well collapses, which we've had happen.
Yes.
Uh and and it could take years to find that other location for a well. And there's no guarantee it's gonna produce what it needs to produce. So that's why we adopted a policy that that you have to have like double redundancy.
Now, my question on top of that.
It's not just this project, but any project.
Understood. So then thereafter, drilling that additional well, there may be neighboring properties there that may be affected by the fact that they had to drill that well because it's taking from the water table to service the existing wells.
They're gonna get a permit for X amount of gallons. So just because they drill a third well doesn't mean they're increasing necessarily that X amount of gallons. DEC is only gonna issue a permit for what they demonstrate they need. So it's not just because they drill a third well, they take fifty percent more water.
Okay, I just wanna understand.
We're actually, we're we we're in the process of pumping seventy two hour test. We have offsite monitoring, there's a plan that that um Mr. Crong. And it monitors the people who signed up to have their well um assessed while we're pumping to see if there was any draws or, you know, change. And there's been nothing reported that were any issues at all. That's gonna be summarized in a real, a quick report and then a full report will be done and it goes to.
So that's with the neighboring properties, so neighbors to it, okay.
The public process where you, there were names that people signed up when we did, I think it was back in twenty twenty two. Couple people signed up and then we had a record of people who kept saying, you know, when they do that, when they go forward, we want our wells tested. We went out to all those people, we sent out the letters and then we actually did a knock on the door campaign, I think. Um so we do have some testing data for that too, that's 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 part of the process.
But is that made public so that people can understand that they would have the opportunity to do that?
Part of our, part of the record.
Yeah, it is, okay.
Testing, but that part of it's done.
Understood, I understand.
You know, we would have to address, you know, an issue if a well was too shallow, we'd have to address it. But so far, so good, you know. Um but great production of of water capacity out there, really good quality, which is also good. You know, should the town ever need, you know, another water source somewhere in that area.
And so these three wells are on the Montage site, right? But it's for both projects and that double redundancy's got, we're comfortable that covers both projects? Okay. And then are you, and I just can't remember, I'm sorry, it's been a little while. Um is there water storage from those wells that we're proposing?
There's currently, there's a tank on both. We're evaluating through the engineering process now where the tank needs to be. Uh whether you need two tanks, um we probably will.
I think we should, so we showed one.
We showed one at Summit Woods on the highest part of property so we can get hydraulic.
There's also, yeah, there's also, it was one on both sides.
We're getting through that detail in the final review of the engineering part of that.
Okay.
So that kinda brings up a point of one project doesn't go, but that's where the tank goes. And you need to have, you need to have rights to that property.
There's always two tanks, it was always, so in the beginning, I, these two projects are separate, both sewer and water. You guys remember? I barely remember. But the DEC at one point asked us to merge these projects together.
Mark, Mark, can you see the microphone?
I'm sorry.
I don't yell at them.
Thank you.
Um so the the DEC had asked that we merge the two projects together for both water and sewer, which was a good idea. Um since then, we had originally proposed a tank on both sites. We think it's prudent to probably keep it that way for the, for that reason. But also, if the water is being pumped from Montage, it'll be treated at a tank on that site. Doesn't have to get pumped to the other project, so the treatment can occur there. And I gotta be honest, a few weeks that I've been doing this engineering thing, those are probably the strongest and cleanest wells I've ever seen. They were very high producers, we ran chemical tests on those and got absolutely nothing. So that's a good source of water right there and the Rockwells.
When was your last, I guess, conversation or data related to the school district? And is this project, have the impacts been updated? And is this project taken into consideration in the new plan for the school district and all the movement and building they're doing?
Um I know that we've been, they've been um CC'd on every single document that we sent out and I know that they've been including them in the list of no builds. And I think it was the last time I heard from the school district, they asked for an update on where these projects were. So I know that they they're aware of them and they're keeping them, but I have no idea if they're in the latest. I don't know, I don't know where they're, you know, how they've accounted for them in their latest projections. I know they're aware of them and know that, you know, where they're, where they are in the process, but I don't know how they use that information that we give them and where and how they project out.
I I just have a question on that, you you mentioned there was gonna be traffic circle oval and you acquired new property for it, is that, so it's gonna, it's gonna be two sixteen, fifty two and the main entrance to Monta- Montage, is that correct?
Correct, yeah. So yeah, it kinda slides, it used to come to a four way. Um it now occupies a little less land on the northern side of fifty two, but it it and it takes a bigger chunk of of the southern side on the Montage property for the bottom part of that circle. And then it touches the top and then the rest of that geometry fits within the fifty two.
So then I think originally you were looking at realigning two sixteen, that becomes a less of a realignment because of the, okay, okay.
That's shown on the, I, oh, it's gone.
And the DOT approved the two entrances to Summit Woods. Yeah, two entrances, the DOT approved both.
Are are they both actual entrances or was one still an emergency?
Could you come to the microphone, please?
No, the full entrances, not emergency.
But both Summit Woods are full entrances.
Full entrances and I don't remember the details, one of them that allowed left and right and the other one, I I don't remember if it was only left or only right.
No, they're full.
Full both or full other? Sorry.
Okay.
It's been a long time.
Other questions, board members and professionals, anything? Yes, stay.
Just out of curiosity, what was the, what's your flow from your well testing?
Uh, where you answered that, which well? Yeah, there's there's three wells, but uh when they were originally drilled and tested, I mean, you were, I wanna say you were up in the one sixty range for one well. That, the old data was when Mark used to come here all the time and and report on the well data, that that's been updated and the testing actually, the the three well, there were two wells. We drilled the third well. One of the original two wells we abandoned and now there's three new, I'm sorry. There's four wells, three of which are in use. They're all producing over a hundred and eighty gallons per minute and some are as high as two hundred and forty gallons per minute, which will provide in a summary with a plan that shows you um, you know, and what kind of flow you'll get once we we use water storage, so.
Do you, do you know what your storage capacity is?
So now I'm gonna go back and say, Mark.
Two hundred, two hundred and twenty gallons.
Twenty thousand gallons. On the Summit Woods side and we were, I wanna say, similar on the, so you're, in all total, you're about four forty, four eighty?
What's your storage capacity?
Um the way we designed that was we put uh fire flow um at the top and then average daily at the bottom. So uh it was designed for ISO standards, so that was for the whole system, for both subdivisions.
Both subdivisions.
Yeah, yeah, you'll have plenty of, you'll have plenty of capacity, the the um, if I could open this damn thing. Um it's it's, the tank is on the, it's just as you start going up Stormville Mountain, uh the Summit Woods property owns a piece of property which actually has quite a bit.
Off Hudson Mountain Road.
Yeah, it's a, it's, it's the highest point in the area. We picked that point so we could hydraulically feed both subdivisions in the event that one of the tanks or the other tank went down, so, yeah, there's, you'll have plenty.
Hope we never need it.
Yeah, hopefully, yeah.
Mark, what's the height of the tank? Height of the tank?
Um I wanna say it was sixty, sixty sixties?
Okay, do you know, is that in the view shed of any surrounding homes?
Oh, you remember we did that balloon test?
No, I don't, that's why I'm.
Yeah, we did.
We did a balloon test.
We did a balloon test years ago, but we also, um we actually did a a winding driveway so you can't, there's no, you can't see it. You'd be looking through and that's pretty much the way we set it up.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Well, this was helpful, thank you.
Thank you for allowing us to come and give you the update, I hope to see you real soon.
All right, very good. And if there's no further business to come before the planning board, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
All in favor of seeking by saying no?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, everybody.